Good evening, welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda to that meeting, they are in the last sleeve on the back wall. Before we get started, I will ask Chairman LaBonne to lead this in a way.
Let's begin.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Detective Bonney right up front, we'll get things started here. And before I get to the formal part, I just have to say Detective Bonney has really represented the city of Waterville quite well, and I'm going to tell you about that right now. On January 23rd, 2016, Detective Sergeant Bill Bonney received the 2015 Officer of the Year Award during the 17th Annual Main Association of Police Banquet, an awards ceremony that was held at the Italian Heritage Center in Portland, Maine. The Officer of the Year Award is presented to an officer who has demonstrated outstanding leadership, commitment, and service to their department and the community they serve. Whereas Detective Sergeant Bonney currently supervises the detective division, which is responsible for investigating all major crimes, whereas his leadership and knowledge of criminal investigations, common sense approach to investigations, and his ability to effectively manage resources and detectives result in a high percentage of serious crimes being solved. Whereas Chief Joe Massey states, quote, "Sergeant Bonney is one of the most professional and competent supervisors of the detective division that I have had the pleasure to observe in my thirty-seven years as a law enforcement officer," unquote. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nick Isgrò, on behalf of the city council, the residents of Waterville, recognize Detective Sergeant William Bonney for his exemplary leadership and dedication to the Waterville Police Department and the city of Waterville. Thank you very much.
Sure. Well, thank you Mayor Isgrò, Detective Sergeant Bonney, you've been all kinds of awards tonight. So, I mean, you're all familiar with the award that he received from the Main Association of Police. We read about it from time to time, the legislature likes to get into the action and recognize people like you for your achievements. And I was saying to Representative Longstaff that we deal in Augusta with issues around jails, and police, and schools, and drugs. And all the things we do and talk about don't really matter unless we have good people like you on the front line. We recognize that, and the Main Association of Police recognizes that, and we're very honored to have you working for the city of Waterville. So, we prepared an official legislative sentiment, it was read on the record by the House and the Senate. I won't read it into the record now, but I wanted you to have it, and I want to say congratulations to you and all of us.
Great.
So I'll put it like that. Thank you very much.
All right, next up is community notes, and community notes is a time in the meeting where if anybody has something they would like to say, tell us what I'll talk about that is not already listed to what we talked about tonight. Now we'll give you time to do it, and you can just come to the podium and tell us who are.
Mayor, if I may, could you?
Yes.
I would like to announce the caucuses are taking place this weekend, the Republican caucus is taking place Saturday, March 5th, it's a regional caucus, starts at 9:00 AM, the doors open at 8:00 at the Chelsea School in Chelsea. For information, you can contact Party Chair Neil Patterson. The Democratic caucus is taking place Sunday, March 6th, starts at 2:00 PM, the doors open at 1:00 at the Thomas College Fieldhouse.
And I know, I'm sure it's the same for the Democrats as well, there's a full schedule on the party websites, I believe, if you need directions as to where you can go, and schedule the events for both of those caucuses. Anybody else for community notes?
Let me ask you this, this is a good time to put it out there to the rest of the council, because I know you've all gotten the email, but it's, within the next couple of weeks, we need to make a determination as to who will be recognized in group or the individual for these fair and honorable votes. So, just want to put it out there, if you want to send me an email, and keep the flow going amongst all of us and so forth, but, so the next time we meet, we can make that, just before it, we'll make that determination, okay? And if you go on to, and I sent you the website so that you can see who has been honored since 2007 by the city of Waterville. So it gives you a pretty good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Scott McHale, let's invite everybody this Saturday, March 5th, to the Windwell Community 12th of July's 3-on-3 basketball tournament, which is being held over in Little High School. There's a lot of local talent teams that have been to play. The first game, I want to say starts at 8:05, and there'll be refreshments, if anybody wants to buy refreshments, and message just come on out, support them to support our local talent.
Speaking of basketball, this Thursday, we have the Battle of the Bachelors Basketball Team, it's a community event with proceeds going to the South M Team Center. It's the Waterville Police versus the Waterville Fire Department. That's why the police didn't say, because they have to practice. It's the eighth year that they've done this for the communities, which is such a nice thing that, you know, so many people give their time to help us out at the South M Team Center. This Thursday, 7 o'clock.
And tickets are only $1, right?
They've never gone up in price.
If I look at the fire, it starts at 8:05 in the morning, that's 8:05 AM.
No, 8:06. I would just like to, on behalf of everybody, send more wishes to Counselor Soul, who just became a grandfather for the first time, and his grandson's born on February 29th, so it'll be a few years before he gets to celebrate that again. And congratulations, Steve. Thank you.
Good job.
Worked just again. Anybody else for community notes? Okay. Go on, the approval and consent agenda, can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Two moves.
Second.
All those in favor? Unfinished business, order 452016.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for approval of four.
Move to it down.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Could I get a roll call?
Yes. Counselor Soul?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Runcel?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Duchesne?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
Order seven in favor and zero tolls.
On its new business, resolution 472016.
A resolution providing for contract renewal with Springbrook Ice and Fuel Company. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city manager be authorized to renew the contract with Springbrook Ice and Fuel Company for heating oil for the 2016-17 fiscal year. Price per gallon will be $1.379 per gallon for an estimated 26,000 gallons for all city buildings.
Move to it up.
Second.
Discussion.
How did we do this past year, Mike? We took a little bit of a loss with prices going so far down?
You mean, what we contracted a year ago?
Right.
And what we actually paid?
I mean, we contracted 219, right?
That's what it was, correct, a year ago, or last July 1st. It went into 19.
Did we have a clause where we could get a lower amount, like down below that, or no?
No, we don't have that clause. No. Saying as if it goes up, we're not subject to any issues.
That's right, that's right. And hopefully it won't go, well, hopefully for us, we'll know it'll go $137.
Right.
I don't suspect.
But who could have believed a year ago that it'd be at $137.9 now?
Right, the conversation pretty much was, we're not going to get rid of this.
That's true.
Hey, what's very good, my opinion is the fact that Springbrook is locally owned and operated. It feels good to be able to do business with someone right here.
The school did it as well, you said, right?
Yeah, the schools actually jumped first, and they actually helped to negotiate this price, the school department did, so we're kind of piggybacking on that.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Next, resolution 482016.
A resolution providing for dissolution of the Midstate Machine Tiff. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows, that the tax increment financing Tiff project for Midstate Machine be dissolved, and that the city manager be authorized to notify the State Department of Economic and Community Development that the city works to terminate this Tiff district.
Move through that.
Second.
Yes, they moved their machines out about a year ago, yeah, close to that, and the Tiff district, when it was created at that building, was really just for the footprint of the machines themselves, and there were six of them, and they were assessed at $1 million apiece. That was a big loss of personal property value from our tax rules, so really, at this point, there's no need to continue the Tiff. We made the final payment in 2015, the final credit enhancement payment, so without them paying any more taxes, we don't have to pay out any more CEA payments. I sent a notice to the building owner, and he was okay with the fact that that footprint district is gone, because he knows that we're going to be creating a trapped and rode Tiff, I think most of you have heard about that. Oh, and I should have started by saying, this resolution is a recommendation from the Tiff Advisory Committee that met last week, and Counselors White, and Mayeux, and O'Donnell, and Mayor Isgrò were all there at that meeting last week. We had a good discussion on this and many other.
Any others? All in favor? Okay, next, resolution 492016.
A resolution providing for amendments to the city's Tiff policy. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows, that the amendments to the Tiff policy as shown in the attached be approved, which would allow our housing-related Tiff projects to be considered eligible.
Move to it down.
Second.
This is another recommendation from the Tiff committee meeting last week. This item came before the council in September 2014, and was voted down. It came up at that time as a result of the St. Francis Housing Project, not the one that's there currently, but there was a Phase 2 that was proposed at that time in September, August 2014. Council at that time was not comfortable approving a housing Tiff. These changes allow the city to consider, not the city shall approve a housing Tiff, we always have the right to determine whether the housing Tiff is a good idea or not. At the present time, really, we don't even have that ability to consider, because the policy itself doesn't really allow for housing-related Tiffs. So, the language that's proposed would at least allow them to be considered.
Did this, excuse me, I'm getting a little cold, did this come from a, um...
A specific?
...store-specific project?
Right, yes, I should have said that, really, this, the Seton Hospital renovation project is what spurred this whole discussion. Yep, we're certainly going to be seeing the same question, whether it's that project, I think we're going to be seeing the same question arise with housing in the downtown, very possibly. And, of course, back then, before the policy was really adopted, we had the Hathaway Tiff, which is housing partially, and the Gilman Street School Tiff, which is all housing, but those are before this current policy was adopted. And when did the current policy, whether it was by intent or not, housing was really not mentioned.
Mike, there's been some different noise coming out of the Seton project. Do we know yet whether they are seeking a Tiff or do we not know?
We don't know yet for sure. At this point, my assumption is they do want to proceed, but they had some indecision, I think if you know, a couple of weeks ago, but I haven't heard anything different where they want to pull that request down.
I think every time the city developer has this come before, is we take advantage of something like this. I know the Seton Hospital complex proposal, Waterville Redevelopment Corp., company, with the Seton project is very beneficial for both the developer and the city. This being in my ward, of course, the neighborhood surrounding the Seton Hospital facility, I have canvassed the neighborhood, and they very much want to see something come in. This is obviously a hospital for a very long time, a building that has not been redeveloped for a very long time, and has a lot of potential. Put this back on the city's tax rules, and some of the things in the Waterville Redevelopment Corps on the Tax Increment Financing District and Credit Enhancement Agreement proposal is, some of the best benefits for this is provide more high-quality rental options, obviously like Collateral Consulting that has, is going to be coming in. And of course, all the redevelopment of Colby, the partnership with Colby and Waterville has orchestrated, is this particular high-end housing is very beneficial for our area. Create employee housing, again, that's another benefit for that, because again, you know, firms like Collateral Consulting and other high-tech firms, and high-end firms in general for business is looking for housing in the immediate area. And repurpose a vacant facility is the other benefit of this property, although a subdivision that has many, there's much interest in it already, we already know that there's a school going in into that area, and there's still room for, there's still room for other businesses to look at that from the subdivision level. So I totally support this. From the Tiff Advisory Council, I feel like there was consensus already supporting a proposal, and I'm just putting that out there.
Any other discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? All right, and here's the ordinance 502016.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
An ordinance providing for amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Move to it down.
Second.
Anything else, any discussion? All in favor? All right, looks like we have a library update.
Library board. Library board.
We did hear something. I know, we've been here a long way, just so we can probably get that.
Sorry, Chip, none for you.
Sorry.
Hi, good evening, great, good evening.
Please.
Thank you, well, good evening, and I also have a cold, so I'm smugly and quieter than usual, so I apologize if you can't hear me, please ask me to speak up. I just would like to thank you all for allowing me to come here tonight to present and give you a few other libraries. And also, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't also take this opportunity to thank you all for the kindness that you do to the community each year in appointing these wonderful board, what, board members of the several libraries' trustees. We have two who are here tonight, and I would be remiss if I didn't call Jan King and Dan Boy, who could stand up and just come on and pay dollars for your social community. The body that appoints these citizens to their library board, and we are so grateful. These are our most important volunteers, and are really tremendous advocates and supporters of the work that the library does, and really making sure that it is available to all of our citizens, so thank you. So, I have some information to share with you guys tonight. Mike said that, Mike, I know he's, when I asked him about a PowerPoint, he was like, oh, I don't know if you do a PowerPoint there, because of the shuffling of chairs, so you have before you kind of a personal PowerPoint, and someday in our future, we'll dream of awesome technology, so that in future years, I can wow you guys with some amazing sort of electronic version of this. But for now, to apologize for the paper waste, but I wanted to kind of share with you, and I think you guys can kind of proceed at your, your own pace. In your packet for the council, we have a traditional parking survey, I'd like to kind of share that with you guys after I go through this beautiful PowerPoint, so that you can really just be so ready to talk about parking, and then end your evening on that exciting note, because you guys have talked about parking not enough, I'm sure. So of course, the library is, you know, part of the city, although it's not an official library department, the city of Waterville owns the library building, the appointed trustees who serve, you know, as governor and board. You own the books, and you ensure the books, and we are so grateful. The library building as it is, it's stood there since 1905. The library itself was founded by a bunch of fabulous women in Waterville, who founded the Waterville Free Library in 1896. This already housed a number of downtown businesses, including in the basement of Harvey D. Eaton's law office, and we are grateful that we have always kind of been downtown, and are glad to still leave you here. Collectively, I've realized over the past 10 years, the city of Waterville has spent about $4 million in investments in this library. That doesn't include the money that was, you know, the capital improvements, but that's just annual operating costs. And so that's, you know, looking at it over a 10-year period, that's a good chunk of money that you guys have spent on library services, and I want to let you know that we have not bought $4 million worth of books, which could be an easy sort of, you know, it's an easy assumption to make of the libraries. Certainly, we have, oh, mixed reputations about when it comes to the A word, which I love, got that, sweetie. But, but I would be remiss if in talking about these resources, we didn't talk about the actual collection of resources that the library maintains on behalf of all citizens. You know, the cool thing about any public library is that you can just walk in, if you choose, if you are so motivated, you can learn something, you can discover something about something else or about yourself, and it's all, you know, all that information is just there. Lady Bird Johnson once said, "The only, you know, entrance requirement is interest." So the city maintains all of these resources, and we, you know, afford citizens, so that any one of us at any time could, you know, be better, be more prosperous, be healthier, be stronger, be better citizens, and happier people. And that's really exciting to me, obviously. I have dressed as library poolay guys, I really leave it, but you know, I was, but as you all know, I was, you know, I'm a person who decided my life transformed by being able to access those materials, you know, being able to learn and to discover and not have any limits put on, you know, what I can explore about myself, and you know, I was a child who got my card at 8 to 5, right over there, downstairs, so, so I speak from personal gratitude and a great deal of enthusiasm, even though it's tempered by this cold, like, um, so you can see on your fake PowerPoint, kind of a summary of, you know, the nuts and bolts, like what can you use with your library card? You can do lots of different stuff, and you know, while books remain beloved, and certainly this reader's heart, but I think many others too, you know, we recognize that books are just one, some one way that people obtain information or learn things, you know, they, it's a, you know, it's a format that's been around for hundreds of years, but so are the pyramids, and you know, scrolls, and tablets, and pita forms, so we are anticipating that at some point in the future, you know, humanity will develop some other technology to store this information, but for right now, it's books. They smell good, they look good, they're already there, you know, they're cheap there. We have a lot of them, as you can see, more than 73,000 books available for anyone to borrow at any time, not all at once, there are limits, of course, but, and there are, you know, through resource sharing, and through collaboration with other libraries, both statewide and locally, we've really expanded your power to sort of access materials, and so with your library card, in fact, you can access or borrow any, you know, that number's right there, you know, millions, there are millions of items that any one of our, you know, library card holders is able to access, which is really empowering and exciting, and that's true for, you know, any of our patrons of any age. Locally, of course, with your Waterville Public Library Card, you can access the collections at Colby College, Thomas College, KBCC, Unity College, Gardner Public Library, and the library in general, through reciprocal borrowing agreements that have been established for, oh goodness, probably 15 years, of, you know, libraries working together to really maximize the collections and really make sure that people have access to the information that they need. It's exciting stuff. Now, a lot of these resources, of course, are available 24 hours a day, thanks to technology and the wonders of the worldwide web, but the building itself of the library remains a tremendous asset, and I feel like it is one that certainly I'm grateful for, I think it's one of the prettiest buildings in the city, but I think that a lot of other people are grateful for it as well. It is an important resource for just many citizens, and I'm always heartened as I drive by in the morning and, you know, look at the library, just before opening, you know, and there's generally a good crowd of people waiting to come in, and it's all sorts of people, it's parents, it's, you know, active older adults, it's people who are small, if we're tall, or wherever in between, just people who, you know, are ready to use the library's resources for that day. And so the building itself, you can see that we are grateful that this particular space exists in our community, we're grateful that it exists downtown and is so accessible to so many of our residents, we're grateful that it's attractive and no longer has mushrooms growing on the ceiling. The physical improvements that the city made five years ago have really been fruitful in terms of being able to offer the city a library that is, you know, I think that reflects our values certainly more effectively, and certainly is far more attractive, and not that aesthetics are everything, but we are grateful for those physical improvements in many ways. So, the library, of course, invests resources not just in our physical building and in collection, but we're also investing in programs, you know, for those individuals for whom books are not the ideal way to kind of absorb information. I know it feels sacrilegious for the library to say that books are not the only way to learn things, they're not the right way for lots of people, and we know that, and so that's why libraries have offered programs and other kinds of services for decades and decades and decades. I think the first storytime in a library was, you know, back in the 1920s, here in Waterville, we opened our bookstore in 1935, you know, bless you, and it had, I think, a puppetry tradition of Waterville, leader or not, I think for 80 years, which is a long time to carry on the puppetry tradition, and I'm astonished when I even think about that, but that's true. But, what you need to know about the libraries, with these programs, we're really looking to be strategic. We're looking to collaborate with other organizations in order to both leverage our existing assets, but also to avoid duplication of any kind of services, and to really just make sure that within the community that we are working as a network weaver. We're working, you know, kind of being like Plato's philosopher, trying to see everything all at once, to see where we can make those connections, and where we can just be more efficient and more effective, it really brings people together with them, they need to be happier and healthier and more productive citizens, because, you know, that's, that is the goal. So we have concentrated our efforts and resources in a number of different areas, in part looking at with this, you know, where opportunities exist in the city, you know, where there are , you know, saturations, and where there are gaps in services too. We identified the following areas as kind of areas of focus, arts and culture, community development, literacy, positive youth development, and workforce and economic development. And so, look all of them, and you can see in your fabulous personal PowerPoint, that I will, kind of, like to be able to share some examples of how the city, through the library, is investing... library, is investing in these areas in our, in our community. So, arts and culture, sorry, because we're going alphabetically in case nobody noticed. We all know that Waterville has identified arts and culture as a major sort of strategy within Florida, looking at economic development efforts, and I think that's right, I think that even our, well, our conversion create really reflect who we are as a community. We have always valued the vibrancy of kind of entertainment. I appreciate reading Frank Reddington's address when he opened up the Opera House of the, you know, the, I guess, the grand opening of the City Hall, the Opera House, and he talked about that. He talked about the need for citizens to be able to have opportunities to work, but also have opportunities to be entertained and to explore that creative aspect of our nature. And if that was true in 1902, then it is certainly true in 2016, and it will be true for years to come. So, arts have helped it for us and really, you know, they are close to our heart, obviously, I think we would all consider a great writer to be an artist, and we value the literary arts, we've demonstrated that we value the literary arts. But some other areas in which we value arts are, and as you can see, we kind of value the weird and the wonderful and really seek to be inclusive and accessible for these programs, and as we think about making sure that arts and culture are really available for all citizens, of course, you know, programs for the library are free for participants, they've already been paid for by taxpayer, you know, resources and support, so as we look at all these programs and opportunities for citizens of all ages, I think it's important and encouraging that there are, that this makes it easy for everybody to participate if he or she wishes to remember that interest and kind of place in. So, as you look at arts and culture, we are crazy about arts and culture, and you can see that we sought to really provide, to really provide a variety of opportunities for people to have creative expressions and really support diverse interests. And so, we love everything from, oh, Star Wars parties, which are super fun and really creative, to fancy art parties, to poetry events, we just think that people are really wonderful, and we love seeing their creative expressions, and we really think it's exciting to be able to see where creativity and community can really collide in wonderful ways. I invite you guys to attend some upcoming events that are happening at the library in this area. Right, oh, on Saturday morning, we'll be hosting a local author, Hazel Mitchell, who will be talking about her new picture book, Where Do Berries Go When It Snows?, which is adorable and charming, and it will be having Moches, which is a Maynard Art Show that will be opening at the library, thanks in collaboration with the Waterville Area Arts Society, Waterville Main Street, and the Frame Makers, and so that will be opening at the end of the month, and that's a wonderful show if you have not yet been. We appreciate being able to host that kind of event at the library, because that really makes it accessible for everybody. You know, the hundreds of people who come to the library each day, many of them may not have that experience or feel comfortable going to, for instance, a museum, you know, it's a capital M, you know, just if you have not had the experience, and it can be a daunting barrier. The library makes it really easy to have meaningful engagement with, you know, the creative expression, and that's great. We love seeing parents talk with their kids about these art pieces, and just everyone has a favorite, so please come by, it really is a special event. We do have, in our permanent gallery at the library, right now, a rotating exhibit, this month's exhibit is by local Waterville artist, David Salmas. We converted in the renovation, a storage space into an art gallery, and so for the past five years, that space has been transformed by the just the wonderful creativity of local residents, it's been really exciting. On March 13th, which is a Sunday, mark your calendars, Colby professor Jim Fleming will be presenting on his new book, Inventing Atmosphere of Sciences. We love authors, we're really, our field's so fortunate that in our local community, we have a number of authors on a variety of really interesting, varied topics. Just last month, we had a local youth author, she has just presented, written her first book and published it, and we were able to host a reading for her at the library so that she can talk about her, you know, creative work and get some, you know, think of that experience. So, it's, we, we think art and culture is just totally fabulous. We are, of course, the library represents the city's interests and the Waterville creates, which is, has really developed as a leading force in kind of the arts and culture momentum here in Waterville, and so the library is one of the core partners, really remains committed to working collaboratively to really have creative expression, be welcome, and celebrated here in Waterville. And we love seeing, you can see that some of the programs that they provide opportunities for people of all ages to really interact in kind of interesting, different ways. So, as you kind of, we're going through the PowerPoint, and my voice is giving out. On page 14 of your personal PowerPoint, you can see that we've kind of shifted into looking at community development. And community development is a, it's not as easy, I think, to find as arts and culture, but what's important about the library is it really, it is building community just by building, being there, as an important third place in the community or as a space that is public, that is for individuals to go, but it's not work and not home, it really creates community connecting in ways I don't think that happens by other places. The library is open to everybody, as long as you follow the rules, you have to follow the rules, as long as you follow the rules, in the library you can stay as long as you need to and as long as you want to, and that's important in, well, certainly in an urban environment where we have a lot of exciting opportunities, I think that having a touchstone space within the city is really important and exciting to see how our citizens can really interact in ways that they don't in other parts of their life. The library is a trusted source of information, which is exciting and wonderful, my husband isn't believing when I say that librarians are really trusted, he's like, "No, it's true, but I survey say that we are," and that's a responsibility that we take really seriously. And what that means is that when people come to us, they need, they're looking to us for help, and so it's up to us to make sure that we know the best resources, the best help, the best information, and, you know, as we, in the same way that sometimes the best way to learn, to get support is not from a book, you know, program, but sometimes it's from another organization, so as we encounter issues or challenges and people come to us about, we're able, you know, knowing the community and having established relationships and working together with other community partners, we're able to make sure that we're, that we can refer the right person to the right resource at the right time, and a lot of times people's needs are time sensitive. Sometimes you can't wait 24 hours to be able to get the right answer, and that we take that, it is, it's an honor to serve people in that way, and it is, again, a great responsibility and a great importance to us to make sure that we are working within the community as a network weaver and just, you know, meeting people with love and confident responses. So, the community development, we really look in the library to kind of, you can see in the illustrations, that, you know, bringing people together, helping in small ways, we think of the public library in any community as kind of like a big hug from the city, although you guys might not think of it that way, you know, a hug makes you feel better, kind of lifts you up when you need it, and that's what the library does too, helping those who help themselves in the best of ways. So, the library also supports literacy skills, and literacy is the, you know, it's a big L-word, harder to find and harder still to kind of settle upon what that means for each of us. We think of literacy in a very broad, you know, in a very broad sense, beyond just kind of basic literacy and ability to read and write. We know that for citizens in the 21st century, that we really need a far more complex and diverse set of skills to be able to really be prosperous and thrive. I have a 13-year-old and a seven-year-old, and I'm looking at their computer skills, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh," knowing what the jobs are going to be like when they graduate, you know, I recognize it's their mom, that they need more digital literacy skills than I'm able to teach them, and it's true for most of us, actually. So, we think of literacy skills broadly and looking at the 21st century skills needed. In the library, we're considering basic literacy skills, that's reading and writing, or just the ability to read this fabulous PowerPoint, or develop a job application, or a driver's license form. We think about civic literacy, know your government, you know, and I, that's exciting as we look at, you know, our engage in this process of, you know, public democracy, it's important for each of us as citizens to be able to, yes, know how this all works. Happy Super Tuesday, everybody, you know, we should know how this all works. Digital literacy, I touched upon it, and we see the need for increased digital literacy from our youngest residents to our, you know, residents on the other end of, you know, their lives. You know, all of us, I think, need more digital literacy skills, and I know that for my own generation, you know, I'm not a native in this digital world, I'm not an early adopter of technology, you know, I still like printed books as opposed to eBooks, and I think that they're probably similar experience, some of all of you may have some, like, yep. And so, digital literacy is, the world is not going to get rid of, you know, touch technology and digital devices anytime soon, so it's exciting to think about how the library can really meet those needs in the future. Financial literacy is, you know, that's a really, well, that's really important, and we are really excited about working, by many ways, to be able to work with our community partners to provide opportunities for citizens to really, of all ages, you know, let's, you know, get them started early, to be able to garner those skills and to be able to master them. I think that that's, health literacy is another area in which we're interested. We're lucky in Waterville to have a number of healthcare providers, we have two hospitals in one city, it's pretty, it's pretty awesome, and so we have a number of partners with whom, you know, we've been working on small projects, but also have our eyes set on some larger scale efforts too, to really look at how we can work together to make Waterville really a healthier community for all. History and heritage literacy is near and dear to my heart. As many of you know, I'm involved with the Waterville Historical Society, and the more I learn about, sort of, the community's history, the more I'm excited I get, but I think that it is, and heritage literacy is important for us too. So, what I've learned about history and being illiterate in history is that it's true, if we don't, if we don't pay attention to what's already happened, it happens again. And I can give you a real-life example, I've been going through the Urban Renewal scrapbook for the city of Waterville, so it's, and as we compare those dialogues and community processes back, you know, back at that time, it's remarkably similar to what's happening here, which really illustrates the need for us to know what, to know where we've been so we can really better determine where we're going. Nature and science literacy are really so crucial too, and that will always be real. There are a fair number of our US citizens who are disgustingly science illiterate, alas, and, you know, for nature literacy, here in Maine, we take for granted, or we think that we take for granted, just being able to be exposed to this beautiful natural landscape. However, you know, we see a decreased knowledge and awareness of even tree species, there have been some interesting studies about how more kids can identify Nike logos than maple leaf. So, as I think about the, you know, the great assets of our own community with Cory Road and this rich, kind of like river trail, we really want to make sure that we are appreciating and really just celebrating these tremendous assets of our city. My voice is not coming out yet, you guys haven't glazed over? We're doing great, I know, I have a lot to say, I didn't even know, I thought it would be much faster, so thanks for listening so patiently. It always gives me great, great enjoyment to talk about positive youth development. I began my professional library career as a youth services librarian, working with teenagers, working with toddlers, and so I have a particular, just, you know, have a particular fondness for, oh, those young citizens, I think they're great, and I think that the library's really trying to show that Waterville is a caring community that values youth, and if a kid comes into the library, that's what I want them to feel, that Waterville is a caring community that values youth, all youth. We want the parents to feel that way, we want the teachers to feel that way, the childcare providers, service providers, and we especially want these youth, you know, these kids, which includes teenagers, I'll call them if they're not kids, other kids. And so, as we look, you know, to really make that a reality, that we saw, the physical improvements that have been transformed, you know, resulted from the renovation have really been so tremendously beneficial, creating a far more comfortable space, the mold problem is gone, I'm happy to report, and it's a safer space too, you know, the removal of some of those access points for toddlers, you know, any doorway is an invitation for a toddler to escape, and so those, you know, these transformations have really just made it a far more friendly space for families to be able to gather, children to be able to feel comfortable, and it's nice to see communities develop as, you know, you just, you know, you can let them, you can let them roam free, the toddlers and babies, without having to worry that they'll be snatched up or, you know, sneak out of path. So, we, in addition to those physical changes, we've also tried to really expand what we are, you know, providing for children in terms of activities. So, we're really looking to provide creative activities and expand our learning opportunities for kids, ranging everything from just, you know, getting messy with glitter, you know, sort of some craft activity, to working with robotics, you know, we like, we like science a lot, as you can see, and, you know, partnered with the wonderful Science Olympia team at the Waterville High School, a number of science professors from Colby and other schools who've been sharing their talents, you know, with local youth in a variety of programs, and it's wonderful to see that kind of community learning happening where, you know, students are being the teachers. And of course, the younger children really love having those teenagers be the teachers, it's, I think we all have seen those examples where, you know, the big kids are kind of leading the way, and it's important to us to really support the learning of all students and all children. As we think, I have paid attention in my personal career to the development of, you know, the baby's brain, we talk a lot, I know in this community about a child's development and how 90% of the baby's child, you know, the brain development won't happen before the age of three, which is a staggering sort of statistic, and you should know that here in the city of Waterville, you make investments in our young residents, those zero- to three-year-olds, through the library, through having the library be a family-based library, ensuring that there are spaces, resources, and toys, and materials that are developmentally age-appropriate, that there are resources for parents and caregivers, that there is a space to bring, where you can bring a screaming toddler and no one's going to like, you know, give you the hairy eyeball, where a screaming toddler can be a screaming toddler, but they'll just be free of themselves. So, thank you. There are some of these spaces in any city where that kind of investment happens, and I don't know that if you all think of it that way in terms of investing in those, you know, our zero- to three-year-olds through the library, but you are. And so, those $4 million over the past 10 years, a good portion of that has been to help our children get ready for kindergarten, learn how to be strong and healthy and be the best person that they can be. It's exciting, and I'm really grateful, thank you, after all that, because it matters. And Waterville wants to be a caring neighborhood that values all youth. And we want to, obviously, I'm almost finished, it's very exciting, but, you know, talking about workforce and economic development, I can tell you that just learned from my colleague Tammy Ravidu today, that tomorrow at the library, members of the Augusta Career Center will be meeting, will be providing opportunities for those employees at Papa John's who have just recently laid off, have a foster job, so that they can connect with career counselors. And so, I think that that's exciting and awesome, and I think that illustrates the type of activity that's happening right now in workforce and economic development at the library with community partners. We partner with a lot of amazing people and organizations to, you know, in this area, Central Main Growth Council, the Chamber of Commerce, C D CAP, they made a regional adult ed, the Augusta Career Center, New Ventures, have been really, really strong and vital partners and have been on it for a long haul. It's, it was in August of 2005 that our state-funded Career Center closed in Waterville, and the city, you know, in that past, in that certain time, we've really, the past 10 and a half years, we've really been trying to work together to find solutions, figure out a path forward, figure out where we can really be efficient and dynamic and effective in connecting job seekers with local employers, because that's what it was about, you know, there are jobs and there are people looking for jobs, and for whatever reason, they don't know what's matched up, and sometimes it's a skill gap, sometimes it's just the knowledge gap, sometimes there are other barriers setting that are preventing people from, you know, accessing them, while getting that right step forward. And so, this collaborative effort that has been happening in Waterville has really been just amazing. What we've been able to do, thanks to the leadership of Tammy Ravidu, who's the library employee, who's been leading it, um, down to the library, and maybe Blit Garden and all these other super awesome people, is that we've been working together to try to figure out the path forward using this, this group of partners, a library, a chamber, Economic Development Agency, CAP Agency, Adult Ed, the Career Center, and, you know, we've been lucky to have other partners like New Ventures. Where can we move forward to, you know, eliminate duplication of services, identify gaps in services, you know, work towards a common language, work to figure out ways of being more effective at working together so that the service, you know, the person who's the job seeker is more effectively served, and the employers who are looking for, who need people to fill jobs and they are able to find those people they need. You know, we want job seekers to work, and we want businesses to find the right people, and I'm really excited and optimistic about the progress that we made, I think that it's, well, it's exciting, and I think that, we just heard yesterday at a meeting, that there's a perception that the library of Waterville is really doing some dynamic work in this area, that was what Ben Tucker said, yeah, from Senator King's office, and it is, and it's thanks to this really rich collaboration. There's a lot of stuff happening at the state right now with the Workforce Investment Act that is over, determining the funding and how people are receiving services. Right now, there is no, there is, right now, Waterville's still in a kind of a cap. Right now, there is no, there is, right now, Waterville's still in a kind of a gap. We still kind of fall, just fall through the cracks because of our geographic location. So we are really working hard to advocate for ongoing services or state services for job seekers and employers here in Waterville, rather than having job seekers and employers have to go to Augusta or for just going in for services. I look forward to sharing updates about this with you all in the future. We are squawking about this, and we're kind of being, we've been kind of pesky about, about it with people at the state level, because I feel like it's really important, and we really want job seekers to, we want Waterville job seekers to find it easy to get connected with the right resources that they can get to work. We want Waterville businesses to find the people they need to fill these positions, and we, and we're not going to stop fighting for that. So, I'm sure, right there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's true. So I wanted to just share that wonderful quote that I learned in doing some library thing, is that a public library reflects the true values of a community. And this is what Deputy Governor Alex Fisher from Tennessee discovered when he was working on economic development efforts for his state. A company was trying, you know, investigating where to relocate a factory from about 200 jobs, so of the same, on the scale of collaborative consulting, and they were looking at, you know, various states and, you know, to put this company, and they had secret shoppers for this company go into these communities, and they visited the libraries, because they said that the public libraries reveal the true values of a community. And they had visited, for Tennessee, the National Public Library, and Nashville's Public Library's motto is, "A great city has a great library." And they had just recently conducted a massive renovation, really resulting in an extraordinary facility that was outreach-focused and really community-driven. And because of the quality of the library and the vibrancy of the programs and services there, and the philosophy of the city about the library, that company chose to, you know, move their jobs to Nashville. And so that was, I love that because I hope that for all of you, and I hope, you know, Waterville, I love Waterville for sure, I really love Waterville, and I hope that through the public library, we're able to really articulate the true values of our city. Equality, inclusivity, creativity, fairness, celebration, and lots and lots of love. That is, has been my experience kind of growing up in this community and returning to it, and being able to work in it these past years. The, so that's, that is, I know, that is really long, I have a lot to say. I'm sorry that I'm so composed, even, imagine if I weren't feeling, if I were feeling perkier, guys, and more healthy. I know, we, your short meeting would be twice long. So that's my, that's my personal PowerPoint. I don't know if anyone has any reflections or thoughts or questions about that. Is there any?
Just a quick one, two things. Our library, I've realized in sharing what we do here with our rural small communities, and I know that Fitzfield has come down and spent some time with Tammy and so forth to see how they could do much of the unemployment work that we do, the workforce investment in their location. I was just wondering, are we still having someone coming that deals with veterans and has a focus with veterans at least once a week?
We, we, veterans, there are career support services for veterans through appointments. And so if today's Super Tuesday, every Tuesday is Super Tuesday at the library, you guys, and you should, if you remember nothing else from my chat room all night, remember that every Tuesday is Super Tuesday. Tuesdays, we have a library where service providers are available to meet with job seekers. And so from 10 to 12, there's a job search lab, dum 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 dum, a job search lab, that is staffed by representatives of the Career Center, Adult Ed, and New Ventures Maine. And so the Career Center folks are the ones who are able to, they have veteran specialists in the Career Centers in every Career Center, and it's they who really have the particular insight. And so through these partnerships, we're able to get that. We also, not to be remiss, and the other part of Super Tuesday, and the reason it's so super, is that all day on Tuesday, every Tuesday, job seekers are able to make individual appointments with an appointment specialist from C D CAP, a 45-minute one-on-one, helping you with your job stuff. And so we really are so grateful to be able to offer that to citizens when they come in saying, I need help, where do I go? It's Super Tuesday.
I tend to be so good at graduations, they're fun.
They're great.
It's really, and it's interesting to see the variety in the age, 10, 16, and it's a product.
Yep, lots of people at all stages of life are in employment transition, for sure.
Good stuff.
Great, thank you. Any other, any other thoughts or questions? Are you all like them to me?
Yeah, so I just want to tell you that your enthusiasm and passion is like a couple of the Pope.
Thank you.
It's just amazing, and I was, had the privilege of going to, one of my constituents is Cindy Jacobs, President of the Trustee's, we guys, and she, you know, letting out that this presentation was going to happen, and I was more than happy to tell her that she knocked it out of the park.
Well, thank you.
And definitely, you know, the services, resources that you guys provide is a definite significant asset for the city of Waterville and just for all of you.
Thank you. We're trying hard, you guys. We really love being in the library, we love it. We love, love, love it. So parking, parking, and on the helpful note, I had mentioned a couple meetings ago that the library conducted a parking survey. It's one of, we have future parking surveys planned as well, trying to, you know, gather as much data, I mean, like, but wanting to be able to share this with you guys so that you just have a sense of, you know, what we're looking at in terms of, you know, people, how people access the library, what are, you know, potential barriers, where, where the needs are, how easy, easy is it for all citizens to be able to get to the library? We, I wasn't kidding when I thought about, when I talked about, you know, carrying a limp cover and a stroller and a bag of books as an example of, you know, hell on earth, and, you know, it'll demonstrate the need for us really to be, making sure that it is really a friendly sort of process to be able to get to the library, whether you are non-annulatory and, you know, in a wheelchair, or, you know, with that crappy conference. So this is data just for your view, unless you have some thoughts or responses, and you continue to collect this information, we will be looking forward to coming back to you guys and just sharing that information, not a whole long other thing, I think, except to do with that, but, that's it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. We're good.
We're good.
We're good.